Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the order the February 20th, 2024 Town Council meeting. If you all will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anne Newberry, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the proclamation for Bob Hannan, can you hear me? I just wanted to say a couple of things. I've had the pleasure of working with Bob in the Land Acquisition Committee for the last couple of years. Bob was always someone who we could all turn to for guidance on any land matter here in town. He was a pillar of our community and a steward of land conservation. Bob was on several commissions and committees here in town, always lending his expertise for the betterment of Farmington and Unionville. I want to thank him and his family for all the support to the town throughout the years of him volunteering his time for us here. So, thank you very much. And with that, Patty.
Good evening, everyone. Before I read the proclamation, I worked with Bob pretty much from the moment I moved to Connecticut. I'm an environmental lawyer. I represented DEEP, and then later on, I went into private practice where I would routinely call Bob with questions. And then I was pleasantly surprised, because I didn't know, to discover that he lived in Farmington when I was Chair of the Land Acquisition Committee. He was on the committee with me. I'm a member of the Board of Farmington Land Trust, and it seems Bob, I crossed Bob's path on a regular basis. And he was always practical, friendly, and told me even after he retired from DEEP, "You have questions, call me." So, that was the type of person Bob was, so I'm honored to be able to read this proclamation Whereas Robert "Bob" Hannan grew up in Farmington and graduated from Farmington High School in 1970, obtained his Bachelor of Arts from Washington University, Masters of Planning from Georgia Institute of Technology, and a Juris Doctorate from University of Connecticut, and was a member of the Connecticut, State of Connecticut Bar Association. And whereas Bob Hannan married Kim Zeta Hannan and raised two wonderful children, Katie and Ryan, both graduating from Farmington High School. And whereas Bob Hannan worked for the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection from 1993 to 2021, including serving as permit ombudsman and commissioners designated to the Connecticut Siting Council. And whereas Bob Hannan served the town of Farmington as a hearing officer and member of the Charter Revision and Plan of Development Committees. And whereas Bob Hannan served on the Conservation Commission from 2004 to 2012, and as Chair from 2008 to 2012, the Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission since its inception in 2012, and as Chair from 2018 until his passing. And whereas Bob Hannan was an ex officio member of the Farmington Land Trust since 2018, and served as Town Representative on the Lower Farmington River in Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Committee. And whereas Bob Hannan served on the Town of Farmington Land Acquisition Committee and contributed to the preservation of valuable and locally historic and important agriculture and other land from development. And whereas Bob Hannan was a dedicated environmental advocate, and through his knowledge, leadership, public service, expertise in wetlands, and the love of the town of Farmington, was an invaluable resource to all the boards and commissions he served, protecting the environment he so loved. And whereas Bob Hannan was fair and unwavering in his efforts to protect the environment and serve the community, a great coworker and fellow commissioner, and a true friend to all who knew Bob. Now, therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission Chairman Robert Hannan for his excellent work on behalf of the community, and we hereby express our gratitude to his family for his selfless dedication and immeasurable contributions and commitment to the town of Farmington and its residents. Dated this 13th day of February 2024 at Farmington, Connecticut, signed Joseph Capitofaro, Chair of the Farmington Town Council.
Thank you very much. We could take a couple minute break for anybody who wants to leave, and then we'll have our state legislators come up.
I wanted to say, he was such a generous guy. I used to run into him at the post office in Farmington quite regularly, and he was always so generous with his time to educate somebody like myself who had really not much knowledge at all about environmental issues to the depth that he had. And he was always generous about, you know, sharing his wisdom and knowledge and answering my questions and so forth. And he also had a great mischievous sense of humor, which is not in the proclamation, but I think everybody should know that. So, I just wanted to say that. It's really a great loss for the town and for the state of Connecticut, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. So, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you for your words. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. If you just indulge me for a little bit, I know last month, you guys did have an information setting with, sitting with the town over at the senior center. Just wanted to give a little public comment first to anybody who didn't have the chance to come and talk to you guys, so in case there were any outstanding questions. So, we're going to do a public comment, and then we'll go ahead and ask our questions from the council, if that's okay with everybody. All right, so we're going to ask anybody in the room who would like to make public comment. You'll have five minutes. Let's come up to the podium, state your name, address, or your position here, and you can go ahead and make comment.
Hi, everybody. My name is Toni Andreoli. I am currently a resident of Unionville. I'm at 14 Glen Hollow Drive. It's still new to me. We just moved in in August. I have two children enrolled in Farmington schools, and I am also the Executive Director of Services for the Elderly of Farmington, which is a nonprofit organization that has been in Farmington since 1965. So, I have big shoes that I fill. Most of the time, people walk in and they ask me where Nancy Walker is, and luckily, I can tell you that she is still delivering Meals on Wheels. And so, like mentioned with Bob Hannan, it sounds like a very similar situation where she's always willing to offer her advice. So, the reason for my public comment, and I only have five minutes, so, is to let you know that as a nonprofit organization and a member of many different networking groups that works with other nonprofits, I am not alone in telling you that, as most of society today, we struggle financially. You know, being around since 1965 means that we want to continue to be around for another 50 years, and we are struggling and trying to find ways to do that. So, where we used to rely heavily on specific grants, and I can give an example of like United Way, many of these different organizations do not have the funding that they once did, and therefore, the trickle effect, right? And it has hit us hard in the last couple of years. We're running on a deficit budget, and we are trying to be creative in maintaining our status. A lot of what we do is geared toward seniors, but recently, in the last several years, we did open our medical loan closet to the entire state of Connecticut regardless of age. So, I can tell you that we helped over 1,000 residents in Connecticut with medical equipment. So, that does things like, you know, if you're underinsured, don't have that piece of equipment that could make you feel safe at home, we're trying to provide that safety so that you can still stay at home as long as possible. And since the pandemic, a lot of people want to stay at home as long as they possibly can. The other things that we do, which are just town, for town residents, friendly shopping, we provide over 45 rides a month doing grocery shopping for at-home seniors, and we also do medical transportation. And we provide rides for free to somebody who's homebound, to local doctor's appointments. These are supplements to what our town provides, and they're very well received because they get, you know, what could be their neighbor picking them up, kind of door-to-door service. I think a lot of them feel comfortable because they're in a car with somebody, you know, and we vet all of these volunteers, so background checks, getting to know them, and things like that. We also run the Meals on Wheels program for the town of Farmington and Unionville. We deliver meals five days a week, seven days' worth of meals, about 50 clients, and we run with 120 volunteers and two staff members. So, we still have costs, and, you know, one of the things I know when I was moving to town and when I started working here, and coming from another municipal center, I worked at another local senior center for a long time, Farmington was known for their services, for their schools, and, you know, one of the things, reasons why I think that happens is because Farmington does a really good job of working with their nonprofits. We just heard about the Farmington Land Trust. And we want to continue to be able to do that and to provide for the residents here. So, we know that one of the governor's plans in their budget is to not increase any funding toward nonprofits. I say that on a general level.
Toni, you got 30 seconds.
But this is it. But, you know, we're hoping to look for funding to either help increase or decrease our budget, and we would also love to have any representation at any of our events coming up from all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to make public comment?
Give my, you want to give our names together?
Beth Kitner. I'm here tonight as one of the town registrars of voters. I live at 24 Farmstead Lane, Farmington.
Anne Newberry, 23 Hatters Lane. I also am registrar of voters, and I'll begin. 2024 marks the first year of early voting in Connecticut, and that begins the last week in March before the presidential preferential primary, which is April 2nd. Farmington is very fortunate because we can use the pavilion for early voting and not disrupt activities at Town Hall. The early voting will be the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday last week of March, and then Saturday, 10 to 6:00. Early voting was approved by the Connecticut voters in 2022, and it went through the legislature last year. Since then, the Secretary of State's office and registrars throughout the state have been working on the implementation. Preparation, additional supplies, equipment, additional staffing for workers represents a significant expense for all municipalities. The legislature awarded $10,500 to each municipality in Connecticut for 2024. In Farmington, the additional staffing for poll workers will be at least a total of 241 hours for early voting events this calendar year. This does not include any required additional time for the registrars in the state. Specific for Farmington, the total estimated cost for early voting in 2024 is $36,950. The presidential primary, preferential primary, will probably cost $5,350, and then there's a good possibility of a state or federal primary in August, and then the early voting before the presidential election of 14 consecutive days is an additional $31,600. That's the August primary and October. So, that brings you to $36,950.
I'm just going to jump in here and say, so when we look forward or look ahead to the presidential election and what we need to do for early voting leading up to November 5th, that is, as Anne mentioned, 14 consecutive days of early voting. And this is where we really see that there's going to be, well, there's a burden to the registrars to adequately staff the early voting site, and then we still have to staff our regular five polling locations on Election Day. So, the labor costs especially over 14 days are going to be quite significant to the town. Early voting in most towns and cities, so it's currently underfunded, as we gave you the numbers, and you can see that the grant really doesn't quite get us what the additional expenses we're going to incur will be. And the governor's budget, as announced, has no additional funding for towns or cities to support early voting. So, we thought tonight was a good opportunity with the state delegation here. We had an opportunity to talk with Representative D'Amico and Senator Slapp over Zoom just a little bit last week to kind of get the conversation going, but tonight, we're asking all members of our state delegation to look out for any proposals for additional funding for early voting, advocate where you can for that. So, should that come up during the legislative session, we really hope that you'll support this so we can do a good job for the voters of Connecticut with this important program. Thanks.
Thank you.
And we have handouts.
We have handouts.
Anybody else in here who would like to make public comment?
Going once for public comment inside. Twice. Catherine, anybody on Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised.
All right, we'll give that one more second. Still none? All right, then we'll move on. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate your time, and thank you for indulging us to allow the public comment to come first before. So, we'll let you guys start off to how's the beginning of your session is looking.
Was it D'Amico? Or, how do you want to do it?
Sure, why not?
Who picked the short end of the straw here?
I'm the shortest one. Both presenters that came up referenced the budget and how there's shortfalls in the budget and lack of money. And we say this every year, so for us, it gets old hat, but it is important for the people of the state of Connecticut to understand the budget process for the state of Connecticut. The governor does not do the budget. The legislature does the budget. But, the governor does present his or her budget at the beginning of session with their plans and goals and ideas of what they want to have done. And then we spend the next, in this case, three months deliberating the pros and cons of the existing budget that's on the table, the governor's additions and changes, and our own needs and the needs of our community. So, needless to say, you know, in a long, you know, short story long, we have a long way to go in this budget to find our final resolution. My experience in doing this a couple times is we will probably see an increase in nonprofit funding. Last year, that was a highly debated item. Many people have brought it up as a priority issue. The early voting, obviously, as tough as it is for a town like Farmington to do all the additional work with 10,000, can you imagine the situation in New Haven that got $10,000 to do additional voting? I think they're the largest number of voters in the state for a municipality. There, it's probably not enough in New Haven as well. So, other municipalities are facing this same problem, sometimes even worse. I imagine there will be some relief in that situation. So, I just want to make sure we address those two concerns and just understand the budget's got a long, long way to go, or a short way to go if you look at it three months, but legislatively, it's long. All good?
You all right? Well, we'll work this way. Okay.
So, just to piggyback on what Senator Lopes had to say, so as you're all aware, we did a budget last year. It's a two-year budget. So, this year, the short session, the three-month session that just began, is when we make adjustments to the budget. And as Senator Lopes said, there almost surely will be adjustments made to the budget because of some of the things that probably should have been funded last year that did not get funded or did not get funded adequately. So, I just wanted to, I don't want to say state the obvious, but state something that I think a lot of people are aware of, but maybe a lot of people are not aware of. We have certain constraints on us as legislators, constraints that we pretty much imposed on ourselves. We have a spending cap, we have a revenue cap, we have a volatility cap. So, you know, without getting into the weeds, the point is, we enacted a certain amount of discipline on ourselves a few years ago. I believe it was 2017 is when most of these caps came into effect, and it was an attempt to make sure that in the future, that we didn't have these up-and-down cycles where some years, we had a lot of money and could fund things, and then, you know, the next year, we didn't have any money at all, or we were running a deficit and couldn't fund nearly enough things adequately. So, in order to smooth things out, we instituted these caps. Some people call them guardrails. So, we have to operate within those. So, the reason I say this is because, you know, occasionally, people will say, well, gee, you have this $3.5 billion rainy day fund, you know, why don't you tap into that? Well, first of all, we're supposed to have a robust rainy day fund. There's a reason for it, just like here in Farmington, you have a robust rainy day fund, and you have to resist every, I used to sit up there, and every year, you have to resist the temptation to tap into or tap in too much into that rainy day fund because you need it for a rainy day. So, the same thing applies at the state level. So, you know, we do have these constraints, but by the same token, we have these needs as Senator Lopes just alluded to. So, I think that you will see some movement, some shifts in the budget just for that reason. I don't know, do I want to say a whole lot more at this point? Probably not. I will leave it at that, because I'm sure we'll continue this discussion.
I think I can use this one. Okay, but thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thanks again for inviting us here. A couple of years ago, this meeting was on Valentine's Day, so my wife didn't appreciate that much. So, the timing is much better. So, thank you for that. I thought what I do, I'll take, is the sound okay? I feel like I'm, all right, too close. I'll take a little step back. There's some new members serving and some people who are watching at home or in attendance here. So, I'll just introduce myself. My name is Derek Slapp, State Senator for the 5th State Senate District. So, that includes all of West Hartford, almost all of Farmington, I split it with Senator Lopes, and then all of Burlington and a little sliver of Bloomfield. And I serve on five committees, so I'm the Senate Chair of the Higher Education Committee and serve on the Higher Education Committee with these folks here as well. And then I'm Vice Chair of the GAE, which is Government Administration and Elections Committee. So, we just heard about early voting, and we do a lot of voting policy and how government works on the GAE Committee. And then I'm also a member of Public Health, the Appropriations Committee, and the Aging Committee. So, five committees. And so, I know, I think it was indicated here on the agenda, we're supposed to talk about some of our priorities. I'll just mention briefly, higher education. Of course, as the Senate Chair of Higher Ed, we're really going to be working on improving access and affordability for higher education. So, some of the bills that we have, and we're not the Appropriations Committee, so for funding for higher education, that's really the province of the Appropriations Committee. However, we are going to be raising a bill to expand our debt-free community college program for students who are residents of Connecticut but who have not graduated from a Connecticut high school. Right now, it's, you know, you could live here for 30 years, or however many, but if you did not graduate from a Connecticut high school, you're not eligible. We want to make sure that the community colleges are really a great gateway for higher education for folks who want to get retrained and want to, you know, find employment, and so we think it's a good way to strengthen our economy. So, that's kind of one example of things that we're going to be working on in the Higher Education Committee. So, I'll just tack to the budget real quick, and then I'll hand off to my colleague, Representative Cooley. There has been tremendous progress, I believe, that we made as a state in the budget, really over the last, you know, four or five years. It's like turning a battleship, right? It's not easy to do, and it takes time, but, you know, Connecticut had their bond rating increase for the first time in many, many, many years. I think it's about 20 years, just in the last year or so. We were able to cut taxes, as many of you know, the largest state income tax cut in state history that many residents will be feeling the benefit of this coming year. And so, you know, and we're not lurching, I think this is the governor's term, lurching from one budget crisis to the next to the next. And our very healthy rainy day fund helps protect, not just us, but most importantly, helps protect our, all of our constituents, right, from the next time that there is a recession, because we know that one is going to be coming. If anybody knew exactly when, you would, you'd be in the stock market right now. So, we don't know when, but we know it's going to come at some point. So, I think these are really all positive things that have happened. But what we've heard from our first two speakers is that there are some needs, right, in the state, and I would put them into three large buckets, and I'm missing some, I mean, but I can't get all of them. But, higher education, you've heard, you've read about that, and there are some needs, you know, with all our constituent units and across higher education. So, that's one. Our nonprofits, one that you heard about, and then Medicaid funding, which is really, has not kept up with inflation, with the need. And, you know, if you look at a city like Hartford, there are, I believe, no pediatricians in the city of Hartford because essentially Medicaid funding is so low. So, it's created real healthcare deserts. It's an issue, and we will have to address it. So, I believe there's somewhere around $600 million of additional requests that are coming in to the Appropriations Committee, and we have somewhere around $30 million of room, right, in the spending cap. So, you do the math, and it's a real tough, you know, real tough to prioritize that. And whether there will be some flexibility with some of those guardrails that Representative D'Amico discussed, that's going to be a big theme for this legislative session over the next few months, because I think mostly across, and again, both parties, we want to have fidelity to those guardrails, because we don't, I don't want to go back to those days where we weren't paying our bills and we were kicking the can down the road, and we know what that was like. So, we've changed the narrative. At the same time, you know, how do we find that right balance? And sometimes, we're going to have to make some adjustments to make sure that, you know, we fund higher education and nonprofits, et cetera. So, that's going to be a big theme, and, you know, we have, as Representative D'Amico, about 80 days left to figure it out. So, I'll leave it there. I know you probably have questions, but thanks for your service. Congratulations to those of you who are new and new roles, and look forward to working with you.
Hello, I'm Francis Rexford Cooley. I'm the young one of this group. I've only been in Hartford since my first term. I represent Plainville, a little bit of Southington, and a little bit of Farmington, the meadows towards Plainville, but I am a graduate of Farmington High School, class of '82. Luckily, I got injured running track that year, so Doron Franklin replaced me on the hurdles, which he reminds me every year and blames me for having to run those. on the hurdles, which he reminds me every year and blames me for having to run those bleep sticks. But it did get Farmington High a state championship. So that was my contribution. I got injured, and it helped the team. My colleagues have pretty much said pretty much everything. I mean, we do have, I mentioned earlier to Tony, who is the nonprofit, we do have insurance, they're looking at pooling nonprofits in terms of, that provide bus-van service to get the costs down. So there are some initiatives, but small to, that aren't going to affect the budget that hopefully will get some of the costs down. I'm hoping that that will go through. But as Senator Slapp said, the numbers are the numbers. And in a meeting earlier, just before session with the State Treasurer, where we were before '17 was a bad place. I mean, we're paying a lot in interest because of our rating. We've turned that around, where we were one of the states at the bottom in the country, we're now one of the more financially stable states, and that's a testament to those in the legislature that served prior to my arriving. So, you know, we can't just blow up the guardrails because it will end up costing more money in the long run. And so there's going to have to be belt tightening. Hopefully, we can find the right balance, but the numbers are the numbers, and if we blow it up, it's going to cost us a lot more in the long run than the benefit in the short run. And that's just the matter of the math. And, you know, you can't change the math. Math is math. Numbers are numbers. So, you know, hopefully, we will have a good bipartisan discussion, we'll come to an agreement, we'll get the best deal for the state. I think everybody wants to get and deal with the issues, and I really am hopeful that we'll be able to get the best situation possible, especially, you know, we do know the big problem with the nonprofits, higher ed, you know, there's a lot of deficits, and that has a huge impact on Farmington because of UConn, the medical center here, and Tuncsus. And the medical center is incredibly important. As someone who grew up in Farmington as a kid, the change in Farmington in terms of its positive impact on the tax base and the business that has built up around it incredibly has been beneficial to Farmington. So got to be cognizant of, you can't just go slash, but the higher ed's got to be dealt with because unfortunately, too much of the ARPA money was, the COVID money was used as operating revenue instead of treated as grant money. And as someone who spent their career in higher ed, on the private side, that gets you fired. So there's going to have to be, on their side, understanding of, they got to get the budgets under control. It is what it is. But I think that there's a good understanding in the legislature of what we need to do going forward, and I'm very hopeful that we'll come up with the best decisions for Farmington and for the state as a whole. And I just wanted to say, serving with fellow members up here, there's definitely a collegial attitude on getting and solving problems, which I think is going to serve us well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll start off with, Dave, you have any questions for our representatives and senators?
Yeah, I have a quick question, and it's more, I guess, just kind of an observation, right? And just wondering what your opinion might be of it, not trying to pin anybody down. But so I've just heard a lot, just here, being new to the council and just kind of talking with folks here, on whatever issues we might have with the state, sometimes getting information from somebody, whether it's an agency or something, sometimes seems to be somewhat of a disconnect. And I guess my observation is, is COVID, the disruptor in remote work, really changed things as far as the executive branch administering their mission? You know, Kathy and her staff are here full-time, you know, the staff is here, you know, you go into most town halls, they're fully staffed. The state, I know, has gone to a remote working model, which I think is, which I think is, one was a response to COVID. But obviously, with the fact that, you know, we have better kind of medical treatments and vaccinations and so forth, it seems like that's receded a little bit. I know the legislature meets robustly, you know, and has staff. And I'm just wondering, if there is a disconnect, if there is a breakdown between towns and cities and other jurisdictions with the executive branch on a day-to-day connection to get things kind of moving to the next level because everything kind of is a process, I just wonder if there's some kind of idea where the government might be looking at less remote work and having people more in the office. And I'm not saying these people aren't doing their work. I don't want to be, I don't want to be like misnaming what's, what remote work is, but I'm just wondering if it's more, if you're more in person, there's a different kind of engagement. So I don't know if there's an observation on your end with that, or if you've heard anything from your constituencies.
Obviously, workplace activities changed during that time. That's a pretty accurate statement, and there are remote models that exist now that didn't exist five years ago. And as you said, the legislature, we're back in person, but we're also remote, which we never had before. Today, I stayed remote for a hearing the entire time, although we try to make it in there as much as possible. Be that as it may, the real disconnect, I think, what people are seeing in a day-to-day basis dealing with the administrative branch, is the actual lack of bodies more than remote work. Someone else, if you can quote my numbers, I might be a little bit off here, but I believe we are at the same number of state employees that we were at in 1970-something. We are, I remember seeing numbers like DOT has 4,000 less employees than they did 10 years ago. Part of that were the budget cutbacks of the last decade, and part of that is finding new employees, and there were some, there's some economic drivers involving retirement for state employees that drove quite a few people into retirement over the last couple of years, and it's a perfect storm, for lack of a better word, that has caused a dramatic decrease in the number of state employees, which on one hand, some people would argue that there were too many before, but we are seeing on a regular basis, offices were like, why aren't you getting this done? And it's an office that oversees the entire state for, say, deep, and they'll say, well, we have three people in that office. And they're slammed, they're working all day long, and they're just overwhelmed with work. We're trying to get more bodies in there, but without bodies, work can't get done. So I would say, I'm a ratio, but the vast majority of the issues people are seeing, especially municipalities, are the lack of employees more than the pandemic reaction.
Okay. Thank you.
I can't really speak to the, I've only been at General Assembly for about one term, but I can say, you know, analyzing the shift to remote work, which has gone on in the private sector as well, has been problematic for a lot of private sector areas in getting a hold of people. Because one of the things that the remote work has done is created an electronic chain. And if anything falls on that chain, a lot of times, you don't know where it was. In an office, oh, I didn't get the paperwork, you can call down the hall and, okay, you know, John or Sue, whomever, did you get that? And they go, oh, no, I never got that from this person. And you can figure out real quick. On the electronic chain, it can be incredibly difficult. I still do contract work outside, and it took me three months to get my full back pay because it just kept getting dropped in company I was doing the work for on the electronic chain. And it's like, oh, we put that in, we put that in, and I can't get to the next person, and it just gets dropped. So, I mean, to some extent, part of this may be we have fewer employees, but part of it's also the nature of remote work, by its nature, because it's not like working in an office where you can quickly check and say, okay, where did this break down? You can have breakdowns, and it can take days, weeks, months to figure out where the break is. And that's a problem that's not just in government, but also in the private sector, and I've dealt with it. It drives me up the wall. And that's part of, I mean, to some extent, part of the new 21st century digital work model.
Amy, you have anything?
Yeah, I have a question about funding for early education needs at the cost of the higher education needs. Can you speak to that?
Could you, I don't want to answer a question with a question, but I'm just wondering if you might be able to be a little bit more specific, and that'll help me with the response.
Well, the educate, they're talking about funding early education more so than before.
Right.
And
You're talking about pre-K and, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yes. And I'm just wondering how that's going to affect the higher education needs, if you're moving the money towards that, or where's that money coming from for the lower education?
Yeah, so the governor's proposal shifted, I believe, about $50 million from K through 12, really, to early childhood education. That's, again, his proposal. And so there's a lot of pushback from the legislature that you probably have read about, and this is, that mostly was impacting charters, magnet school funding, that kind of thing. And so, you know, if I had to handicap it, I would say that, you know, there's going to be a lot of resistance to that. And so, and in terms of higher education, you know, the numbers are much larger than $50 million is the gap. So there's, you know, without some tweaks, right, to, you know, and finding some flexibility, there will be no new funding, right? I mean, because we just don't have the room under the spending cap. So that's going to be a gut check for every legislator in the building as to, you know, if, essentially, let's say we're under the current guardrails, we're saving, we're putting $600 million into the rainy day fund and to pay off pensions. Should we instead pay off 400 million and take 200 million and split it between the nonprofits, higher education, to keep tuition down and, right, those type of things? Or is 600, or should we do absolutely as much as we can to pay off our debt, right? You know, my fear is that if we say, look, the guardrails, exactly how they're constructed, all three of them with no flexibility, we keep these for 50 years, right, however long it takes to pay off the debt, and it's decades, all of it, we just keep them for 40, 50 years, whatever it is, and then we'll make the investments in these other things, what is the state going to look like, you know, 40 years down the road? And who's to say that the exact guardrails that we put into place in 2017 are the, you know, with no tweaks, are the right ones 100%? And I think that's the debate that we're grappling with. I think we need to find a balance, but, you know, not blow up guardrails, but we have to be able to maintain, you know, higher ed and some of the other things that we talked about. So I don't have, like, the, I think nobody up here, right, has the answers exactly how it's going to fall, but your question, I think, is a great one because it hits the nail right on the head in terms of those competing priorities. And, you know, happy to talk with you more about it, too, offline, if you have some insight into kind of where the needs are and what your priorities are. I don't know if anybody has anything to add.
Thank you.
One of the problems in the early ed was created when we changed the start date for kindergarten because you created a hole with regards to what we have to provide under federal law, and there wasn't funding for it. So that's one of the problems here is a lot of the towns are, especially with special ed, where the kid would have been covered under, you know, pre-K, but they're not starting kindergarten. Now, you got to cover that year. So all of a sudden, you have a population that has been created that didn't necessarily exist before, and a lot of towns are struggling with that issue, and that's where some of the, talk about move, shifting money to pre-K because there was the creation of a financial hole that wasn't really necessarily understood at that exact moment when we voted on to become in line with almost all the other states in the Union in terms of the start date for kindergarten. So that's created this kind of anomalous hole in the budget cycle that we kind of got to address now. Can't really wait till later, and I think that's where the governor's, some of the shift is. Now, how much is going to get covered, exactly how it's going to get broken down, we'll see going forward. But that is a problem that was kind of created when we shifted the start date because you have a very specific and expensive population that now needs that year coverage that they would have probably started kindergarten, been under existing structure that could handle them. Now you got to kind of recreate and create a new structure to deal with that going forward. I just was at, dealing with in Southington, was, they were discussing that and the costs impacting them. So that's where some of the pre-K is being focused, the monies are being focused on. So I think there's going to be a shift, the question becomes how much it's going to be.
Keith?
My vocal coach, Anne Newberry, is over there. I have to make sure I speak into the mic.
I saw you looking.
Okay, so with college being so expensive, many people are looking towards trades, construction and manufacturing for jobs and careers. The trades are very appealing for high school graduates, and even with some demand for an older workforce. Young people are having trouble finding jobs as apprentices because of licensing rules in Connecticut. For instance, I just learned that in Connecticut, a company must have three licenses for every one apprentice. So I guess my question is, would you support going to a one-to-one ratio like our neighboring state of Rhode Island or a lesser ratio like New York? We always hear about, and even in the new high school, where, you know, having more programs to get kids into trades, and you always hear that it's a great alternative to college, but the reality is, in Connecticut, some of these licensing requirements are making it disadvantageous for a company to bring on an apprentice. So there's kind of a backlog of people that would like to, and you have to get these hours, and it's a considerable amount of hours, so the longer you wait to become an apprentice, the longer you're waiting to start to make a living. So would you support less licensing requirements?
Honestly, I live in the trades, I work in the trades, and
That's probably all we're
Yeah, and I've not heard this as being like one of the paramount problems of getting people into the workforce. I mean, there are other opportunities through the trade schools and, you know, apprenticeships to get these jobs, and you're correctly, you know, I'm a huge advocate of this, as we often like to say, you know, electric boats sitting there looking for 11,000 welders, starting people between $16,000 and $80,000 a year. You can get in there without a student loan, and obviously, it's for quite a few young people, it's a great way to go. But be happy to look into it further, but I've not heard of that being, I've heard of the talk of changing the ratios, but the last time I remember discussing it, that wasn't the impediment for getting young people into the trades.
That's how it was explained to me, and particularly because in our area of the country, we have that ratio. Oh, into the mic. So I can leave that one at that. I have a sort of a two-parter as well. Same ballpark, but a different profession. I emailed all you, maybe not Mr. Cooley, last year about the tip credit elimination bill that was coming through as a proposal, and all of you got back to me, had nice conversations, emailed you got back to me. I had nice conversations, emailed everybody, so I appreciate that. It's my understanding that that's coming back around again. In summary, for anybody who's not aware of it, the, and I own a restaurant, so I'm very, is very keen to this issue. There's a push to, right now in Connecticut, servers and bartenders make, are paid 638 or 869 per hour, and then they make tips. And so, the, the tips make up the difference of minimum wage, oftentimes much more than minimum wage. And in the event that you are ever not compensated in tips enough to make an hourly wage that is minimum wage, the restaurant isn't coming, it's not coming up on the restaurant to come out of their pocket to give you the minimum wage. So, there's no, the, the language that I have an issue within that bill is this idea of like a sub-minimum wage because there is no sub-minimum wage because you're always expected to come out to make the difference up in the event that someone doesn't make the tips that are required. And my concern about this bill for Farmington is our small businesses, be it our restaurants, cafes, or anybody working for tips right now, tho, those owners would need to come out of pocket to make up the difference. And it's a significant difference, you know, the difference between 638 and 1569 is $9 per hour. Servers, you have a lot of servers on the floor to, to keep up with demand for, you know, busy restaurants, which hopefully we have in town. And then also, we have a chunk of our population that either in part-time or full-time jobs are bartenders and servers. And the belief amongst people that I know in the profession is that if restaurants need to make that difference up, it would come at the cost of some of those higher tip wages. So, where a server now could earn $25 an hour with tips, the restaurant would probably need to take a rake of those tips to make up the difference, what they are paying in wages, and then spread it out amongst everyone in the staff. So, it, it sounds like a great bill, pay people more money, but in the end, it will probably cost more money and have the opposite effect. And this is what I emailed you all, so I didn't know if anybody had any more of a take on that or if you think I'm crazy, like it's, I'm completely wrong or off base or
I do not think you're crazy.
I really appreciate that as a starting point.
You know you're on the record now with that statement.
Yes.
You've got to live by that statement.
No, absolutely. I'm, I stand by it. So, no, I think that this is a tough issue because, you know, and I'll just speak kind of personally, I'm, I'm very sympathetic and as, I'm sure you are, as a restaurant owner to, you know, the, your employees, they're disproportionately women, oftentimes, you know, single parents. I mean, people who have some, some, you know, some challenges and/or are working extra jobs to, to save money. So, you know, we, we certainly want them to, to earn a good wage. At the same time, I hear what you're saying in that, you know, you, you got to look at who pays. And if you're increasing it, you know, one argument I've heard against the bill too is that, you know, tips would, are going to decline because, you know, consumers are only going to pay so much, right? So, if we become like Europe as in, right, with a VAT or whatever built in, then, you know, we, we would theoretically lose the tip culture and practice. And there's a lot of servers that don't want to see that happen actually because they, they, they like the current system, feel like they make more money. I still haven't gotten satisfactory response from, about why the easier solution is not to enforce the current law in terms of when servers are, are not earning, I, I might say this wrong here, I think you'll probably know exactly what I'm talking about in terms of that, that delta when
Yeah.
the restaurants have to fill in, right, if they're not
It's a tip credit makeup, which, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. If they're not out on the tables, right, that they should get. And, you know, I've been told, well, some of them are, you know, there's, it's uncomfortable going to them and, and the owner, whatever. But, I mean, I think th, there is a, a law on the books that seems to deal with that. And so, it seems like that's the more, sometimes the, the simple solution is also the right one. And so,
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm, I'm still open-minded to it, but that's, that's kind of where I am.
I appreciate that. And that's exactly what my perspective on it is, that there is a law on the books and if it's enforced. I just, when you talk about like, in Farmington, we don't have many restaurants, but the ones we have are, are mostly sole providers, Naples, Georges, I, I'm going to miss a million of them. But, so, that difference on those small businesses and those businesses would be something that would be noticeable, be it on it being passed on, that, that money being passed on to customers and their prices and/or anything else. Anyway, I don't want to take up everybody's time with my
Yeah.
I actually, I paid for college and grad school, no debt, working in the restaurant industry. I was a cook. And I went, went onto the floor as a waiter because I could make a lot more money. Hated it.
Nibble on your feet from track.
But I have huge problems with the proposal. I don't think that necessarily what it's being sold as, I have problems with. First, if, once you go to, you're at minimum wage, you can get pulled from the floor. Currently, under law, if you're getting tip credit, there's a legally limited amount of work that you can do, what's called side work. You're not supposed to be going in and racking dishes.
Yeah.
And professional servers make way more than minimum wage. I've worked the business, I've worked the industry. I spent 20 years in it. If you're a professional, you show up, you know what you're doing, you learn it, you're going to do a lot better than minimum wage. The industry response elsewhere where this has been done has been to go to a gratuity on the check. 16, 18% is usually around the amount. This is a many years ago because I still had hair. I had a corporate manager who obviously had never worked the floor telling me how much I was supposed to be making in tip and wage. And I looked at him and said, I won't be working here for that kind of money. And he asked me how much I made in tips. And I just said, I'm not going to tell you, but you might want to think about doubling the number you just gave me. Those that do the job and they learn the profession are going to suffer under the proposed bill. Simple as that. You lose the protections of being on tip credit, so you can get pulled off your station. We need you to run three racks through the dishwasher. If you're not out there doing your job for your customers, you're going to lose tip. If the restaurant goes to a set tip amount, the professionals are losing money. I think this is a feel-good bill that is being promoted by people who don't really understand the industry. They don't understand how much bartenders and professional servers actually make. I don't really care what an 18-year-old kid who's just entered the industry is whining about. They need to learn the industry, learn the trade and move up. I come from a very old-school, yes chef, no chef background. And you learn the industry, you're going to make a lot of money. I see this proposal as capping the professionals from making the money that they would make as a server. And I think that most of the maiderdies, masters of the house, the front of the house, and the master chefs would agree with me on that. So, I'm going to be opposed to it based on my professional background. And, you know, again, I spent 20 years in the industry. That's how I paid for graduate school so I could eventually go into academics and I became a dean. But I was one heck of a good cook. And I never, ever talked back to my chef. It was yes chef, no chef. I won't make that mistake again, chef. I will find a new way to screw up. And then they'd yell at me later. But that's my take on the bill.
Thank you. Yeah, again, the spirit of my two questions is just alternate ways to make a living that are not necessarily for your college bound. There's a lot of people that are going to be on those tracks. And I just think supporting that as much as possible, top-down, you know, is, is really important. So, I will leave it at that. I took up more time than I should have.
Sarah.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My question is, if you could each speak to kind of what you see as your biggest legislative issue for Farmington or priority for Farmington in the upcoming session?
I'll, I'll start out with the most exciting topic of all for you guys. Well, a lot of times, our, our most important topics are dictated by the committees we're on, the committees we run. So, I'm the environment chair, so I care about your garbage. And that's what I'm, you know, one of the things we're trying to do here is lower your tip fees and start decreasing, or decreasing. I'd be happy to stabilize the level of tip fees that most municipalities are facing. So, for, you know, to try to flesh it out for the people watching, we set up a situation where there's, there really are no landfills or dumps left in the state. We have less and less trashed energy plants and the ones we have are aging out and on the verge of closing. So, we're in a situation where we're shipping a vast majority of our trash out of state. And we're paying to ship it out of state, we're paying to dump it out of state, and those prices will only go up over the next couple of years. And I don't know where Farmington is now, but I've heard somewhere in range of $150 a ton for tipping fees and with the potential of $200 a ton in the next couple of years, which will significantly impact municipal, municipal budgets. So, in that realm, that is probably one of my biggest priorities that would help the town.
Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll echo what Senator Loeb's had to say. I'm also on the environment committee and it is a huge problem for every municipality. Farmington is no exception. And we, we need to figure out a, a, a way to get rid of our municipal solid waste that's affordable and that's environmentally conscious. And just to piggyback on that, and I've had conversations with Councilwoman Boy Williams about this, and hopefully we can, the, the whole council can get involved in this, food waste diversion. There are, there's a pilot program that several communities in, in Connecticut have, have instituted with, with guidance from the Department of Energy Environmental Protection to, to get food waste out of the, out of the waste stream. According to DEEP, somewhere between 30 and 40% of the waste that we have to deal with. And it costs money to, you know, as, as Senator Loeb said, it's, it's an expensive proposition. If we can get 30 or 40% of the waste out of the waste stream and put it to better use, it's a win-win for everybody. And, you know, there, you know, places in, in Europe have been doing this for years, places throughout the United States have been doing this for, for several years. That, you know, I think Connecticut needs to, needs to get on board and figure out a way to make food waste diversion a, a reality for every community. The, the other thing, I'll just add one other thing, a, a personal thing. As you're all aware, we have a community in, in, here in, in Farmington, in Unionville, New Horizons Village, that is home to about 100 people with various disabilities, independent living facility. And they have inspired me and several other legislators to introduce legislation for the last couple of years. And hopefully this year, we're going to actually make some progress on it to, to, to do a couple of things, to make medical diagnostic equipment more accessible to people with disabilities. And, and, you know, for most of us, it, we don't even think about it. We go to the doctor's office and we get a, a complete physical exam and everything's fine. For someone who's in a wheelchair or someone who has some other kind of limitation, it's a real problem. And, and it's been a problem for years and it's not getting any better. So, that's something that I'm working on in the Public Health Committee that I'm a member of. And then also, you might have heard in the news lately that there is a push to, in, you know, in conjunction with that, to, to reduce the wait time for wheelchairs being repaired. Again, if you're not in a wheelchair, you don't even think about this. But if you're a wheelchair user and you have to wait literally weeks and months to get your wheelchair repaired, it's, it's, it's just unconscionable. So, that's something that the Human Services Committee is working on this year. And hopefully, we'll make some progress there. So, that's it. Or at least, that's it for now.
Yeah, I just want to say about Representative D'Amico, and he's not, he's not giving me $5 under the table to say this or anything, but that, that, you know, so much of getting things done at the legislature is having a champion for a certain cause. And there's a lot of good ideas that don't go anywhere because there's no, there's no champion. There's nobody who's willing to just roll up their sleeves and focus on an issue, not care about the credit, but just do it because they are personally inspired to do it. And that's what Mike is doing with this issue, with folks who have disabilities. And, you know, he doesn't care about the, the political, you know, whatever, the credit or any of that. He's just doing it because it's the right thing to do. So, I think that's pretty cool. Yeah, so, we are working together with some folks, residents of congregate care setting in Farmington about what they say are excessive rent increases and older folks who are getting priced out of their home. It's an issue across the state. So, Mike and I have been working on that to try to empower rent, rent control commissions to at least look holistically at the, at the cost for residents of, of where they live. That's one issue, aside from the budget, of course, and, and fighting for every penny for Farmington. I think that's a, probably a, a must for all of us on here. The last thing I'll say is there's, you know, when you heard me talk about higher ed, there is no larger economic driver in the state of Connecticut than higher education. In fact, it's not even close. And if you look at Farmington, of course, hugely impacted by UConn Health, we don't want to see massive layoffs. It's going to, it would be devastating for our state economy and for Farmington. So, making sure that there is adequate funding for higher ed, including UConn Health, is a big priority for me. Thanks.
The one area I've been working on since November is essentially liability insurance coverage for nonprofits that run van service and bus service. They kind of got lumped in with the mega buses and the datgoes. My understanding is I sent a letter into the insurance committee, which I'm not on, but that on both sides of the aisle, there's a lot of support to hopefully get our nonprofits separated so that they can either in a group or a captive market, get that, their insurance rates down. So, that's pretty been my major focus and that's going to be my major focus, trying to get that and work with both sides of the aisle to get that through. You know, I'm just a Lilly freshman, so it's like, pick one thing and stick to it. I am hopeful that we will get some movement, more movement on Patterson Pond Park. I know that there's, I know the speaker wants that problem solved. And I know that we've got the report came through. So, hopefully, it's a short session, so the chair on environment would be, have a little bit more foreknowledge than I would, but I'm, hopefully, we can keep that moving forward because historically, it's always been a amazing asset. And I think it could be another amazing asset once again. And my grandmother would be very, very happy, and she lived in Farmington, if that came back. So, basically, the rest of my session will be more reacting to what's coming forward than being proactive. But that's the two areas where my main focus is first, van and bus service for the nonprofits. And then anything I can do on the Patterson Pond Park to help. And then mostly, it's going to be analyzing information and trying to come up with, okay, where, where do I stand on it? And so, that's pretty much me for this. And hopefully, you know, if any issues coming up, please reach out, reach out to me. I always want to hear from the towns I represent because a lot of times, you'll be aware of things that are not in any of the committees that I'm on. And I'd rather know beforehand than 90 seconds before I'm supposed to vote on something. So.
Thanks. Patty.
Thanks. Thank you all for coming tonight. I have two issues that are near and dear to my heart. One is education funding in general. We've already talked about that a lot tonight. So, I'm just going to reiterate that as we're going into budget season, education grants, we never really know what they're going to be or how much they're going to be. And we're always told, well, this is what we estimate. And those funds are critical in order to make sure that we can maintain our budget. And universal pre-K is going to put another constraint in terms of figuring this out and trying to make sure that we can fund the education and maintain the education that Farmington is known for. And similarly, higher ed, I think, are, in part, are Farmington graduates, need to be able to go to affordable colleges and universities. I, I, I'm married to a college professor. He emailed some of you this evening already in terms for, and make, so, and he's a professor at CCSU. He's the chair of the Computer Science Department. And he's getting national accolades for his program. of the Computer Science Department, and he's getting national accolades for his program. And it's not getting, it's not getting the funding and support that he needs in order to be able to support a national program. And I know it's not just computer science, it's just the one I know more about. But Farmington has a lot of students who are interested in computer science. We were, we tried to hire, tried to have in the budget last year, a computer science teacher, but there wasn't enough room. So, there's a matter of two collaborations between state universities that have these professors that can assist with curriculum and can assist with students being off campus or taking classes at the university. There's, and more collaboration to try to create a way to share resources or create more benefit. The other issue, which is where I'm going to have my question, is the environment. As I've talked with Mike a lot about this, I'm going to focus on one right now. In 2020, the legislature passed a bill to sunset the Transfer Act in the intent of making Connecticut more economically competitive with surrounding states. Connecticut is the only state, because, well, New Jersey has something similar. So, one, there's two states in the country, and Connecticut is one of them that triggers environmental investigation and remediation obligations upon the transfer of ownership of property that are called establishments. And part of the issue with the Transfer Act is that it captured sites and properties that should not have any environmental contamination. For example, I had a client that had a storage unit. They, someone broke the lease. They had to call someone in order to dispose of the stuff in the storage locker, and that triggered the Transfer Act and investigation and remediation obligations because someone had stored virgin chemicals in their storage space. So, that's one of the reasons why the Transfer Act was not, was overbroad and captured sites that shouldn't and didn't necessarily accomplish what it should, and resulted in businesses not wanting, and uncertainty, and out-of-state businesses not wanting to do business in Connecticut. So, in December, DEEP provided its first draft of the regulations that are supposed to replace the Transfer Act. Because under this bill, when DEEP promulgates final regulations, that's when the Transfer Act will sunset. These proposed regulations are going to capture so much more. They're going to capture property owned by municipalities. They're going to capture property owned by small businesses, residents, regardless of whether or not the property is sold or transferred. At least under the Transfer Act, we knew, transfer, that's when you have to look, you have to know what's happening. And now, it's much more uncertain about what exactly is going to trigger investigation, remediation responsibilities. And it's based on knowledge of contamination, is what DEEP has proposed. And I can think of here in Farmington, I know there's the Parsons property that we're signing a lease for with DOT that I know has had historic contamination. I don't know the current state of it. I know there's the Charles House property over in Unionville that has contamination, and it's not owned by the town, but it's owned by someone. And at some point, what's going to happen is we're going to start cap, some of these properties that don't, that aren't necessarily, Charles House may have more significant issues, but say Parsons. There's, the way these regulations have been proposed is they are going to create this, I'm actually hearing from folks that it's more uncertain than the Transfer Act and makes it less economically competitive. Because, so, I mean, I'm happy to talk about this offline. Really, what my question is, is just if there's been any discussions in the legislature about whether or not, about at least somehow addressing this from the perspective of municipalities and small business owners, because we need that for, and residents, because this is going to capture. The way DEEP has currently drafted it, it's going to capture homeowners that have oil underground storage tanks for their home heating fuel.
You've got longer arms than I do. I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on what DEEP has promoted as the new system. Your timing is impeccable, because from a meeting with the DEEP Commissioner just a couple days ago, from her lips, where when you encounter people who have questions about the new regulations, tell them to call me. I want to talk to them. So, we will help you set something up, because there is a lot of, it is incredibly complicated. Like, they explained it. I still don't fully understand exactly what it's doing. And there are experts all over the place, kind of jamming around, taking wild guesses at what this is going to do. And a lot of times in government, we've all been through this. People hear stuff, and they think the worst, or think something, and sometimes it's not always accurate. There's changes. There's still some ways to go before these new regulations get promulgated. There's going to be hearings. There's going to be opportunities for adjustment, for discussion. But, get ahold of me. We will set you up with the experts at DEEP, if not the Commissioner herself, and they are more than happy to get out to the community. Maybe we set something up in Farmington to talk about exactly what their plans are. Their goals and plans are to do away with the problems of the Transfer Act that held up business development and make things run smoother. Not everything in this world is perfect. Maybe it's a flawed, maybe it's not a flawed product. I don't know. But we have a long process, and these regulations take a long time to debate, and that's a good thing. Sometimes it's good we move slowly. So, if you do have expertise, you do have knowledge on this, I'd be happy to involve you in this and go through this process.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great. I just, I think there's good intention. I think, I've probably spent close to 100 hours in the past six to eight weeks with 190 pages of regulations that they released. And it's far more broad and encompassing than I could have ever imagined. And I can't tell from the many meetings I've been in with some of the folks at DEEP if it's intentional, or if they don't realize exactly what it's capturing.
Let's shake it out and see what happens.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, gentlemen, for everything that you've done. I actually went online and checked out the dozens of bills that you guys have all, you know, put forth. So, I want to thank you for all your work. And I appreciate that we're doing higher education, we're doing nonprofits, and we're doing Medicaid, all really three important things that we need to address. One thing that I, I'm very curious about is the driver of what funds that stuff, and that's economic development. And we haven't talked too much about that. I'm just curious to know what initiatives we have, or are coming forth for doing economic development, so we can fund what we're doing and even more than what we need to do. So, I'm just kind of curious to know what's in the realm of economic development.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Brian, and I appreciate your comments, you know, about bills. And you mentioned, well, we're doing Medicaid and nonprofits and higher ed. We may not, you know. I mean, it's, we talked extensively about, right, the budget challenges. So, we'll have to see where it shakes out. You know, I mentioned, I mean, when you say economic development, you know, and I mentioned this briefly, we talked about our priorities, you know, it's higher education, which I believe, I mean, is clearly about economic development. I mean, not only, but, you know, Connecticut is never going to be the lowest-cost state in the country, right? I mean, we have some good manufacturing, precision manufacturing, right? I mean, we're doing some good things. But, I mean, I believe we have to be the smartest state in the country, you know. And that doesn't mean everybody has to go to school for four years or get PhDs, whatever. But, we have to be one of the most credentialed states in the country, right? So, that could be a trade school, that's, you know, I talked about community college earlier. And last year, we expanded the debt-free community college, which is not free, by the way. That's, you know, an important distinction, because we want people to, I'm going to mention the FAFSA, which is, you know, not a great time to do that right now, considering all the troubles people are having with it. But, we want people to, we want to maximize federal funding for higher education, right, clearly. But then make sure the cost is not a barrier for people to go back to school. And that's what I was mentioning in terms of, we passed a bill last year for returning students. So, people who want to get retrained, right, people who want to go into the trades, to go to Asnuntuck Community College, which has a great program for manufacturing, that kind of thing. And so, you know, and I mentioned earlier, expansions for the community college. And to make sure that people can get a great education, you know, no matter what their focus is. And again, it doesn't have to be a four-year or graduate degree. So, I think those things, and ensuring that, you know, we're adequately funding, and again, I'm not, you know, higher ed is part of it, but is going to significantly help Farmington and the state of Connecticut, you know. And so, and then, you know, back to the budget, is that some predictability for the business community, I think, is important. So, knowing that, okay, you know, next year, there's not going to be a massive tax increase, right, because we have a healthy rainy day fund, and we've done a lot of work making Connecticut a better place to do business in. And I think those things need to continue.
I'll just add real quickly. I appreciate what Senator Slapp had to say, and certainly all those things that he mentioned contribute to a robust economic climate in Connecticut. I think over the years, we have made more money available, low-interest loans, forgivable loans, depending on, you know, the number of employees that are hired and retained by companies. I mean, we've done many things, and we'll continue to do many things, to incentivize businesses to come to Connecticut and stay in Connecticut. And certainly, you know, the financial aspect is important. As the Senator said, just having a well-educated workforce is certainly important. So, and as you mentioned, predictability on taxes. We have to do something about energy costs, because that's certainly, you know, a big impediment for every business in Connecticut. And, you know, God knows, we've been working on that. I'm not sure how successful we have been. But, so, those are all, those are all in the mix. And certainly, I think that's on the mind of just about every legislator, the question that you asked. What are we doing, and what can we do better to encourage economic development? So, I'll stop there.
We're obviously doing great, but strike while the iron is hot.
Yeah. You're right. And it's funny to talk about economic development now as opposed to 10 years ago, when we were floundering and we're thinking like, what can we do to spur growth? The, I know people individually may be struggling over times now, but the economy is booming. You know, as I say, I work in the trades. Everyone's busy. Everyone's desperate to hire more people. As Congressman Viber says, it, you know, you're probably looking for employees. I mean, that's our biggest impediment. The state's looking for employees. There's high demand. There's a lot of work out there. Employment's down. So, it's not something like we're saying, oh, boy, we better get more nurses. Although, those programs are in existence from time before. Capital Community College in Hartford, one of the schools, just has a huge nursing program now, once again, full, booming, really doing great work, getting a lot of nurses in the community. As we learned from the pandemic, probably could use more nurses and healthcare providers. So, there are a lot of things actively happening. But with an economy that's kind of booming, we like to stay out of the way. And that doesn't mean we're not always looking for new ideas. I know the Chairman of the Energy Committee and I were asked to tour Denmark, I believe it was, to see their more novel trashed-to-energy plants. And we thought about it, and then we really struggled with the idea of telling our wives that we're going to go to Denmark, but we're just going to be visiting dumps and trashed-to-energy plants. And we thought that was a hard sell, so we may have to take a pass on that until another day. But we are always, always looking for new opportunities in the state to address the issues that face us.
Thank you.
So, I'll try to wrap up for everybody here. Senator, Representative D'Amico, we did speak in December about PURA, the double-digit increases for gas. Electricity now has come up the board. What are the guardrails we're trying to do there to try to cap these companies from coming in and just, you know, taxing us with these overinflated increases on gas, electricity, and everything else? This puts a strain on our residents, our businesses, and our government.
So, I'll let my colleagues jump in here. I will simply say that I think PURA, the Public Utility Regulatory Authority, has had a pretty, a very good track record of, you know, scrutinizing the rate requests, you know, the rate increases that are requested by different utilities, and coming to a reasonable, a reasonable conclusion. I mean, look, they have to make a profit, but, you know, they don't have to make an egregious profit. And I think the fact that we have a strong PURA Board, strong commissioners, I think that that's our best, our best hope and our best guarantee that these, that rate increases will not be excessive. I'm sure one of my colleagues can add to that.
Great, great question. I mean, it's probably one of the biggest problems facing the state going forward. We did regulated, as everyone famously knows, years ago, and it was a bad move. Our increases have gone up, our energy costs have gone up 400% since. And there's really, they're going to keep going up. And yet, we see some of our larger utilities seem to be having quite large profit margins and not be as responsive as they could be to some of our concerns. And I'm trying to be very politically correct here and be nice. So, you know, we've passed a couple bills in the last couple of years that have put their feet to the fire. The people at PURA are really trying to be a little tougher on them. They've, these utilities have kind of had, quote-unquote, they have a monopoly. And they get to set a price that ensures their profit. And as we dug in deeper to their profit margins, we found things in there that probably shouldn't have been included in their profit. They were getting profit on their profit. And we're holding their feet to the fire, and now, as we're seeing, they're pushing back. So, it's a great question that in the next couple of years, this will be a real determining fight as we go forward to see where we're going to be on our energy costs, because they are too high. We need to diversify our energy portfolio. We're doing wind. We're doing all these things. But as you know, A, all these things cost a lot of money upfront. And the return isn't going to come back for, maybe for 20 or 30 years. But the more we diversify our energy portfolio, the better will be 20 years down the road. And we just have to bite that pill that it's going to be expensive for a while to get this stuff set up and run.
Well, thank the four of you. I know you guys probably had a long day already, and I'm sure you're in session, so an early day tomorrow. So, I thank you all for your time. I encourage anybody on the council, if you have any additional questions, please email everybody, just in the savings of time. We're at 8:30 now, and just like to cut you guys out, so get some rest for your busy day tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have Section D, public hearing. We have none. E, any new items? None. We already did our public comment, so we'll go to G.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the January 2nd, 2024 Regular Town Meeting.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for the January 16th, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the January 20, or is January 23rd, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Reading of Communications Written Appeals, we have none. So, we'll go to I, Report of Committees, 1928 Building Committee. We are still on schedule as far as design, and hopefully, progress into matching up with the high school as far as when they start the demo, when we can start to do construction in order to make the building sound and safe, in order to go further in the process. We have a couple more meetings coming up. We have a Communications Committee, going to gather up a lot of information, start notifying the town of the progress we have made. And I don't know if I'm pushing it too early, but we are going to start a campaign about bricks. So, eventually, we're going to sell bricks. People can put their name on it. It's going to be in the walkway going up to the new town hall. So, another way to try to generate some money, put your name on a little piece of history. And we'll go over to the High School Building Committee.
Sure. So, we've had three meetings since the new year. We voted to select Arcadis as the owner's representative and move management services to provide those services for us. There's going to be a lot of coordination that's required when we move into the new building, so they'll be helping with that. We've been voting to approve various awards for technology and furniture. We've been voting to approve various awards for technology and furniture for the new building. We're on schedule. We had recently a, the, probably saw, we had the February 2024 project update, which really goes into great detail on where we are with the building, what construction is being done. And one of the, the great programs that I think that's been offered through, through ONG, our construction manager, is ONG Builds, where they offer basically classroom experiences for our students in many of the schools to go and see what it's like to be in, in construction or in architecture. And that's been a great opportunity for our, our students. And so, if you haven't read it, I urge you all to read that communication as it shows how great we're coming along with the building, so.
Thank you. We will move over to reports of council chairs and liaisons. So, the chair report. A couple of things happened in town, which were good things. Basecamp is a new co-working space located at 4 Main Street is now open. Experienced or dynamic new workplace. Space can be rented daily, monthly, or annually. Pinnacle Dental celebrated a ribbon, ribbon cutting on Friday, February 2nd. They are located at 218 Main Street, Farmington, and they are now accepting new patients. Farmington was recently mentioned in the House Beautiful Magazine February issue as one of the 30 best small towns in Connecticut. And you can go to their website and read all about it. Farmington's Regional Probate Court, the Honorable Judge Evelyn M. Daly, was recently named the 2024 Ladder Award recipient. The, the award honors a woman attorney who has left the ladder down for those women who follow her. The award is aimed at recognizing the efforts of women in the profession who have recognized the importance of mentoring and supporting more junior lawyers in their own journeys to success in their profession. The award is presented to distinguished women attorney each year. We will have the 12th Annual Wine, Beer, and Spirits Tasting, which will be hosted by the Farmington Community Chest, March 23rd at the Polo Club. Proceeds benefit the Farmington Police Benevolent Association. Tickets are $50 per person. Our local restaurant, Fuente Pub, was named Expert Pick for Best Latin American Restaurant by Connecticut Magazine, second year in a row. Our gallery at 29 Mill Street would be hosting the Horizon Artisan Market and Art Show on February 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Farmington Food Pantry needs your help. They are looking for pasta sauce, Chef Boyardee ravioli, chili or stew, coffee or tea. They have four drop-off locations. Their main office is at 75 Mills Main Street in Farmington and at the Amistad Hall. There's a drop box here at Town Hall, a drop box at Farmington Fire, Main Street in Farmington, and also a drop box at Stop &amp; Shop Unionville. Thank you for supporting our residents who are in need. And last, let's see here. Farmington Community Services, I'm sorry, Farmington Community Recreational Services on 222, 7:00 p.m. will do an upcoming parenting workshop, all about everyday interactions with their child. You can go to their Facebook page for more information. And we'll go over to our Board of Education liaison.
The Board of Education has met a few times since the first of the year, including their budget meetings. I, I lost track. They have, they appointed Bill Beckert as the new chair and Andrea Sabinski will be the new vice chair, or she'll continue as vice chair. And they have, they recently reviewed their proposed capital budget for 24, 25, around $4.4 million, including a variety of facility updates such as roofs and ventilation projects. They, the Board of Ed met to discuss their budget and provide a proposed budget. The drivers for this year's Board of Ed budget will include the ending of the ESAR grants that were available for COVID funds or were available as a result of COVID. That's ending, I think, at the, the end of this summer, as well as changing costs in the economy and the transport, transportation to improve student safety and obtain higher and better services. And it's also driven by the reductions from last year, just in terms of the services that are needed. And unfortunately, what I brought with me was the original proposal, which I think changed by a small amount. But what was proposed, I think it's just under 5.9% proposed increase is what is being proposed to the town council for the Board of Ed. And that includes a brand-new transportation contract with a new bus company that was, the, the board approved that contract at their last, or approved to move forward with the contract and with the particular vendor at the end of the last, at their last meeting. And I know, and one of the big considerations was that they would be reliable. I know a big issue in town for parents is where their children are. When it's 20 minutes, 30 minutes past the time the bus is supposed to be home or in reverse. And one of the remarks that I heard during that meeting was, there was a question about whether or not there should be GPS on the buses, so that way, parents can track it. And the response was, well, quite frankly, if the bus is on time, you don't need the GPS because you know where your child is, which I found very heartening. And I, and there's going to, it calls for new vehicles and a lot of other benefits for the town that we don't currently have. But as a result, that transportation contract is, transportation contract was going to increase regardless of the vendor, but this transportation contract is a 700, approximately $700,000 increase over prior years. And I think that's the gist of the meeting. There's a lot that's going on, but that, those are the critical components.
Thank you very much. Conservation Inlands and Wetlands.
We have the proclamation for Bob Hannan earlier this evening, but otherwise, no report.
Thank you. Economic Development Commission liaison.
Okay, the EDC had their first, had their winter business breakfast on February 14th at the Polo Club. They had a speaker, Stephanie Abrams, who is the President and CEO of the New England Air Museum, and her presentation was really great. It showcased where they're going in a new interactive venue for kids to get interested in aerospace, and it was a great meeting. Our next meeting is March 13th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Town planning and zoning.
Yes, the town planning and zoning met in January. They actually also met in February, February 12th, a week ago Monday. I would just say, there's a trend kind of on their business, and, and that trend is really, they've seen a lot of applications for special permits for home businesses that many times you have to schedule a public hearing for that. But it seems like it's a trend where, you know, people are looking at that opportunity to take their home and actually try to have a commercial endeavor to start there. Obviously, if it becomes so, so successful, it could move beyond that point. But there's been a number of, of those types of applications that have, that they have heard. There's also been a special permit for, for a business to keep poultry and raise rabbits. That's been more of a, that's been more of a, one of these issues where it doesn't fit neatly into a home business. It, it touches a lot of different things. And they've had to, they've had a public hearing on it, they've done some more research on it, and they haven't, they haven't approved that as of yet. So, so these are a trend that's occurring. There's a number of people that want to raise chickens on their property that they've, they've, they've also entertained. Some of the bigger things, obviously, the 1928 building was on the agenda last week for a special permit for the renovation of the 1928 building in an hour forty zone. That's been moved to March 11th, so that, that was, that was pushed off. And then, there's been some other applications for just, you know, subdivisions and, and things like that, and it's kind of the normal course of business. It seems, you know, Chair Halsted, Scott Halsted and his panel has done a great job in, in really looking at the issues, debating the issues, and coming to conclusions on how the, how the appropriateness of the zoning, the zoning rules and regulations apply.
Excellent, thank you. Report of the town manager.
We have the written report in, in your places. Just a reminder that we have your budget schedule, also that our next meeting is next Tuesday night. That will be our capital budget meeting. The agendas are going to be going out at the end of the week. A reminder that that meeting does start at 6:00. We do have good news is that on February 1st, I did, excuse me, I did receive a fully executed agreement between the state of Connecticut and the town of Farmington to lease the Parsons property, so that did come to my attention. And also, just to let everyone know, on February 29th, at 8:30 to 10:30, there is, the Farmington Police Department will be hosting Coffee with a Cop event, so you're all welcome to stop by. And that is it for my written report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the report from the town manager.
Second?
Any discussion or questions for Kathy?
Kathy, I have a question. I know by charter, we're supposed, the town council gets the budget 45 days before the town meeting, so are we going to see, or your proposed budget? So, do we see that at the end of next week, too?
No. You see it at the, for, we're setting a public hearing in March. That's when
Right, but, don't, I, I know, but don't usually send us, provide the budget to the council before then?
No. No, usually, it goes out the week before the town council agenda in March.
Okay.
So, that's when the capital budget will come out at the end of, that will come out this next week. And then, for March, you have, you're setting an agenda item here to set a public hearing on the town manager's budget in March, I think, March 12th. The budget goes out the Thursday before that day.
So, the charter states that the budget will be present, provided to the council 45 days before the annual meeting?
Before the annual meeting. So, the annual meeting is at the end of
It's April 15th.
All right, I'll, I'll, I don't have it in front of me. That typically, what we all have been doing for 25 years is it goes out the Thursday before. Hopefully, we've been following the rules, but that's when we did. So, I don't have the charter sitting in front of me, but it's anticipated that it will go out on the two, the Thursday before the March meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to aisle appointments. Patty, you saying aisle three, or Dave? I don't know who's making your motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion. I just got to get there. I move on Agenda Item L3, that Andre Simon be appointed to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission for the balance of the four-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2026. And he would be taking Bob Hannan's place.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item L5, I'd like to make a motion that George Santos be appointed to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission as an alternate for the balance of a four-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2025.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item L6, I'd like to make a motion that Priya Swamy be appointed to the Green Efforts Committee, beginning immediately, for an indefinite term.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L8, I'd like to make a motion that Kyle Nodden be appointed to the retirement board for the balance of a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? That's just to replace Lieutenant Egan retired, so Lieutenant Nodden now is taking his place on the retirement board for the police department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L9, I'd like to make a motion that Robert Brochu be appointed to the retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L11, I'd like to make a motion that Joan Valenti be appointed to the retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L13, I'd like to make a motion that Daniel Diver be appointed, is it, sorry, Daniel Diver, right? Sorry. Be appointed to the retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I think we've covered all that. M, old business. We don't have any, so we will go to Agenda Item N1.
I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of one 40-foot-by-40-foot outdoor structure at the Westwoods Recreation Facility to Precise LLC, Milford, Connecticut, at the purchase price of $113,765.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Kathy?
This would be for a contract with the vendor to supply a 40-foot-by-40-foot outdoor structure at the Westwoods Golf Course. This structure will be used to house the equipment necessary for the operation of the splash park planned for the site, as well as the bathrooms, changing rooms, and storage. This bid is only for the structure, including doors and windows. It does not include any finished work inside the building. The award is also subject to the state of Connecticut approval because 50% of the cost of the project is funded through the state grant. So, this is the first part of our recreational area that's going to have the pickleball courts and the splash park. And so, this would be where the bathrooms and a little office area would be, so it would be the outdoor structure.
Excellent, so actually, we're starting to move along then.
Yes, we are.
Any questions for Kathy?
Just one, Kathy. The state approval is, does that, so we approve it, and then the state approves it, and then it gets awarded? Is that the process?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Joe?
I could just give you an update. The state has approved the award, so. Department of Economic Development, we submitted to them at the same time as we submitted to the, actually, we submitted to them before we submitted to the council, to make sure we got their approval, and they, they gave us their approval last week.
Thank you.
Excellent, any other questions?
Just a quick question. I'm curious now, is the inside not going to be finished? Are they going to finish it when they know what they need inside, or?
Oh, it's just that this group isn't going to be doing the finishes for it. I think internally, either our people are going to be doing it or we'll be hiring subcontractors to do it.
That's what I figured, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no problem.
And just my question on that, would the inside also be, have an opportunity for a kind of a grant share? Or if we do it our own forces, we wouldn't have a grant share? Or, or is there a possibility, if we bid it, would there be a grant money?
That we've already received the grant, so we got a steep grant for it, and it was 50% of the total cost. So, we got, I think, what was it, a $500,000 grant?
Oh, okay, so the grant goes beyond this 40-by-40 structure, just the exterior?
Yeah, the total project will probably be in the neighborhood of $900,000.
Right.
The grant will be about $500,000.
Okay.
And the town will have to put up the rest. Unfortunately, in-kind services are not considered matching.
That's what I thought. I thought in-kind, so we're not considered matching, so, okay. But you, right now, we, we were locked in for $500,000 on their grant.
Right, exactly.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N2, I'd make a motion to award a contract in the amount of $133,695 to Norcom CT of Nagatuck, Connecticut, for the acquisition and installation of communication equipment and, sorry, equipment to add a transmit site at the West Farms Mall site to improve fire department radio communications.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Kathy?
So, this is to contract with Norcom to provide the equipment and labor necessary to add a transmit site at the West Farms Mall. The town utilizes the roof at West Farms Mall for stationing radio equipment for the public safety communication at the mall and the surrounding area. Over the years, the radio coverage in this area of town has experienced problems. The town staff has researched the coverage problems and have determined that adding a third transmit site would improve fire department radio communication coverage. A similar project was undertaken last year to improve radio, the police radio coverage, with very positive results.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N3, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract in the amount of $89,315 to Zibic Systems of Littleton, Colorado, for the acquisition and installation of dispatch consoles and furniture at the police department's emergency communication center.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Kathy?
For the past four years, we've been setting aside funds in the capital budget to replace the dispatch consoles and accessory furniture in the emergency communication center at the Farmington Police Department. The existing consoles at the dispatch center are the same ones that were purchased and installed when the police facility was open in 2002. Due to the 24-hour-per-day, seven-days-a-week operation of dispatch center, the consoles experience much more use and wear. Also, because of their age, they are not compatible with the newer communication equipment. So, we've researched various consoles to determine that the consoles made by, I don't even know how to say it, Zibic Systems best met the needs and the configuration of the center.
Any questions? Any questions?
Are we still getting money from Burlington for, since we share?
Yes, we are. Yep.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N4, to set a public hearing on March 12th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Recommended Budget.
Second.
Motion and second. Kathy?
This would be just to set the public hearing for the March 12th meeting at 7:00 to go over the Town Manager's recommended budget.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda Item N5, to amend the appointments to the Farmington High School Building Committee as follows. The changes are indicated on the agenda in bold.
Second.
Kathy?
It looks like by the agenda that Beth would be moving to a voting member, and she's being taken off as a non-voting member.
Correct. Thank you very much, Beth, for all your work. I'm sure it's been a lot of time, and I'm sure you must be excited to find the completions coming soon.
We're on a good plan.
Perfect. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N6, I make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds, and there's a couple-page list below on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. And I'm fortunate to see any of us on that list. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N7, to cancel the regular town council meeting on Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion and second. Kathy?
Typically, after all our budget meetings, the last March meeting, we cancel.
Don't want to see us that much? Any questions?